Good morning, everybody. Bob Bocun. I wanted to fill you in on the nine-one-one board system and what's going on there as far as the concerns and everything on the radio waves. I've talked to both companies and our big concern now is the, of course, the Salt Creek project because they're the ones that are building and everything and want to make sure that everything is good and not going to cause any problems. The last time they checked radio frequencies and everything was in March and then I talked to Bob the other day and they wanted to double check those again. They do that quite frequently. And to make sure that any new towers or any other new frequencies or anything like that that are coming in, that turbine that they may put up would not affect that.
How can they check the frequencies if they don't know the height of the turbines that are being put up?
You have to ask them all those technical questions, okay? They can answer those a lot better than I can. What we are assured is that they are checking on their models where that turbine would go and I would almost assume that they're gonna know how high it is and they plug that in and they know if that turbine can go there without blocking anything or causing a problem. If it were to cause a problem, then they have to fix it and that's all in the paperwork in their contract. As far as that paperwork and so on...
They is who is they?
The Salt Creek developers and then the other one that they're looking at is Apex on the new one. Right now, I know the big concern is the Salt Creek because they're the ones who are constructing right now. Any questions and stuff or copies of paperwork that show how they take care of it should be directed to them. They're the ones that are going to be able to answer the questions fully and give you the best answers.
So who enforces that they do abide by that? Because I mean, you know that you say they need to take care of it, but who would enforce that if somebody has a complaint about the radio waves?
Well, that's up to the, that depends on how the ordinance is and everything there.
Well, our ordinances don't currently have enforcement anywhere, so who would enforce this?
I haven't looked at that. All I can tell you is what we're at now, what they can do. And that's definitely a good question and, you know, make sure it gets worked out. Everybody should work together to make sure that that is worked out. It's, in a way, kinda like the COVID thing too, you know? We were supposed to go, oh, well, people got more than ten people there, we're supposed to stop and cite them, you know? And that kind of thing. Well, you know, it's all gotta be in writing and set up. So there'll be a list of laws and rules and regulations and who's supposed to enforce them. I mean, that would all be in writing and how that stands now, I can't tell you. I haven't looked at it. I don't know.
So you're speaking as a member of the nine-one-one?
I'm just giving you the information from the, as a member of the nine-one-one board, the information that I have gotten that they assured that that is going to be taken care of. And we are all concerned about, we're all concerned about it. I mean, we questioned it right away to make sure that it was...
They just sent you this so you didn't have a meeting lately?
Well, not a full board meeting with them, no. I have, they're more than happy to come to any of our board meetings, talk to anybody. They're more than happy to answer anybody's questions. They tell me, you know, let the people know to call them, contact them, ask them the questions. They can answer them better than I can. It'd be like asking me about brain surgery. You need to talk to the doctor because I probably can't answer you very well. But yeah, we want to make sure that that's all taken care of in the proper manner and that it's not going to jeopardize any safety. And I don't know how it, I mean, I was told too at first that, well, they're just gonna put them up and see what happens. And I was like, no, that can't be right. So of course, I'm making calls too and talking to people and checking. That's how it is. They're going to take care of it. Any of these companies should be able to tell you how, maybe even show you how they put the models in and make sure that nothing's going to affect something else. They put it in for setbacks and ordinances and everything else. Like I had said before, sometimes people that may want one, they may not be able to get one because of how the ordinance is or the rules or the setbacks or something like that. I think everybody can work together and by all means, ask the questions. I mean, they're important questions. And I'll be the first to tell you, I don't necessarily agree with everything that may be in an ordinance or what rules companies may have or what information they may not be able to give out. But we can all discuss it and talk about it and get her taken care of. A lot of you have very good points and very good concerns and, I mean, I appreciate that. We don't, may not all agree, but we can certainly all get along. We can all get her taken care of. Okay, anybody can call me anytime. Anybody can call any of the companies anytime. If you're having problems and they won't answer your questions, I don't know what to tell you, you know? But I mean, I'll always answer the best I can and try to refer you to the people, but if they won't talk to you, which I doubt would be the case, but we'll do the best we can.
I just got a comment related to hers. Okay, who is going to oversee it? It has to be someone. You guys, there's rules, there's laws. If the cops weren't around to enforce the laws, what would happen?
It all depends on how it's written in the ordinance and I don't know how that's written. If there's been anything written yet or how they plan on doing it, on who's enforcing it.
But something needs to be updated so someone is overseeing. You can't expect these big companies just to abide by everything.
Well, they will have in there somewhere along the line how it will be enforced.
Yeah, but it needs to be done.
I don't know, like I say, I don't know where it's at right now and that's something that you have to talk to somebody else about.
You can't assume because I've learned in life you can't assume things.
That's correct.
But we've been told by the board that they're not planning to update our ordinances and our ordinances don't currently have anything about enforcement, so how would we be updating that?
You gotta talk to somebody else besides me. I can't...
Who would that else be? Who would the else be that we talk to if it's not our Board of Supervisors?
Well, right now, because of the fact that attorneys got involved, which makes everything greasy. As soon as somebody talks about a lawsuit or attorneys, then people aren't supposed to talk. That makes it real bad.
Yep, that was Salt Creek then that started that, wasn't it?
I have no idea.
And we tried to come talk and they won't listen then.
But there again, you know, that's, you're asking me questions that I can't answer. I wish, you know, if it was me, I'd make it real simple. Hey, forget about the attorneys and stuff and everybody talk and get along, get taken care of, but that's not how the world operates unfortunately, so.
I'm sure you understand that if we're gonna rely on the developers to enforce, that's kinda like having the fox watch the hen house.
No, I'm not saying have the developers...
And rely on them. They've lied to us, Bob. You've gotta understand our side of it. We've been lied to. We haven't, they haven't been truthful to us. They've told us what's not. It's just not a good situation.
So the enforcement's kinda like the Iowa code. It'll tell you who's going to enforce it, how it's going to be enforced.
So relying on developers to take tests when a tower hasn't been up, when we don't even know the size or the height of the tower, I find it a little difficult that they're actually doing tests on it.
Well, it's best if you call them and ask them how they do it because I can't explain how they do it all.
There's federal regulations for that. It's not, it's not optional. There are federal regulations for that, for interfering with nine-one-one, all of that. So it's in their contract. If you look, excuse me, not their contract. It's in their plan. It's their responsibility to make sure that they don't interfere. So there are federal regulations that we have no control over even here.
But you do have control over the Tama County ordinance that is incredibly...
It has nothing to do with the ordinance. This has to do with...
Enforcement is in the ordinance in responsible county regulations and Tama County's regulations have not dealt with enforcement or compliance or a citizen complaint process as we have suggested to you multiple times and that's why we as citizens are continuing to ask for updates to that ordinance. Yes, the federal regulations deal with the FAA and lighting of towers and there are federal regulations, but things that we are asking for Tama County to do are clearly in the control of Tama County, yet Tama County's Board of Supervisors chooses not to update a twenty-four-year-old ordinance, an ordinance that was last adopted in 2012 and was railroaded through again on May sixteenth. That's the issue. These things are clearly in the control of Tama County government officials and Tama County chooses to take no action despite the public outcry for change.
Anybody have any other questions on the, for the nine-one-one stuff?
Captain, would you like to sit up here?
I'll switch you if that's all right. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Bob.
So, good morning. I'm Heather Canwell. My husband and I have two young children. We live on an acreage outside of Kirk.
And I'm John Michael Pluck, a fourth-generation Tama County crop and livestock farmer from Earl Geiser. We're here today on behalf of Tama County against turbines in the interest of public safety. Specifically, we're here to discuss an ongoing public safety issue with you. We've asked you many times in these public meetings, who in Tama County government is responsible for enforcing the Tama County Wind Energy Conversion System ordinance? That's the ordinance you three railroaded through May sixteenth without a single change from 2010. Despite the calls from hundreds of citizens who have signed our petition calling for the essential need to update the outdated ordinance, we're asking again today because Tama County's outdated wind ordinance lacks clarity on who's responsible for enforcing the provisions of it to ensure that developers are complying with the ordinance.
When we've asked you previously who's responsible for enforcing the wind ordinance, after some hesitancy, you ultimately said you believed that the zoning administrator Todd Atfield was responsible for enforcing the Wind Energy Conversion System ordinance.
Is Todd Atfield here today?
No, I don't see him.
If not, why not?
Someone has to come.
Can you please explain why he's never been present at one of your public meetings since April twenty-fifth? Yet it's interesting that he could be present for your closed-door session, May fifth, with your attorney Carlton Salmons from the Heartland Insurance Risk Pool. How is it that zoning administrator Todd Atfield can only be present to meet with you and the outside attorney from Polk County that you as supervisors chose to use instead of the Tama County attorney Brent Herring? Yet Todd Atfield never attends a public meeting with you and the concerned citizens who have been here to meet with you each of the past seven weeks? Are you prohibiting Todd Atfield from attending these public meetings? Larry, was that?
No comment.
No comment. Is your attorney Carlton Salmons telling Todd Atfield not to attend the Public Board of Supervisors meetings or is someone else?
Pardon? Pardon?
No comment. And why don't you want the zoning administrator to be present at public meetings where the concerns about how Tama County unlawfully allows industrial wind projects to be placed on ag land that is still being actively farmed? The public has been here every week since April twenty-fifth to express the growing public concern about the public safety hazards of industrial wind turbines. Benton County's zoning administrator attends their Board of Supervisors meetings when zoning issues are discussed. That includes their June seventh meeting when their supervisors told an industrial wind developer from Canada that Benton County prohibits industrial projects on farmland with seventy CSR or higher and therefore industrial wind projects are not allowed in Benton County. Benton County supervisors explained that any remaining land in Benton County below seventy CSR was wetlands or conservation areas not suitable for building industrial projects on. So there is no place for industrial wind projects in Benton County. And they handled the discussion professionally and politely in a matter of thirty minutes. It was refreshing to see Benton County's professionalism and dedication to serving the public and preserving their farmland. I attended that June seventh meeting in person and many in our coalition watched it online, live on YouTube. Where is Tama County in the process of broadcasting your Board of Supervisors online in real time like we've asked previously?
Could you speak to the people?
No comment.
And why don't you have microphones in this meeting room? So that everyone can hear what you have to say, even if it's no comment?
No comment.
Why are you saying no comment on something that's as basic as having microphones or having these meetings broadcast online in real time? I'm sure if you contacted the folks at Benton County, they could show you how easy it is to do.
No comment.
Maybe those of us like me who live in Clark Township should ask Benton County to annex Tama County. Is that what it's going to take to get Tama County's government to listen? To the public outcry for changes to how Tama County regulates farmland to prevent it from being overrun by industrial wind projects? Tama County has a lot to learn from Benton County when it comes to how to preserve productive farmland and how to serve the public. Benton County supervisors listen. They ask good questions. They openly answer questions from the public. It is clear that Benton County supervisors have nothing to hide. Benton County's Board of Supervisors are there to serve and listen to the public and so are their zoning officials. But Tama County is a completely different story. For example, why hasn't zoning administrator Todd Atfield attended a single Board of Supervisors public meeting in the past seven weeks? Our coalition has been here each week since April twenty-fifth. We have provided example after example of how outdated Tama County's ordinance regulating industrial wind project is. So why doesn't Todd Atfield attend these meetings to listen to and engage with the public's concerns? Anybody wanna respond?
No comment.
Larry?
No comment.
How can he enforce the Wind Energy Conversion Ordinance or Conditional Use Permits granted to industrial wind projects? How can and does Todd Atfield serve the public that pays his salary if he doesn't take time to listen and interact with the public?
So for example, on Monday, May twenty-third, I reported a lack of compliance with Tama County's regulations by Salt Creek Wind LLC developers to the zoning administrator Todd Atfield. I stressed the public safety risk of these concrete pads not being properly fenced or drained as required in the Conditional Use Permit from Tama County zoning that allowed their construction. The current concrete pads and sites of potential Salt Creek Project industrial wind turbines are filling with water, lots of deep water. Per the permit, these holes are twelve foot deep by sixty-five foot wide with the mound of dirt that was dug out all the way around. Someone could easily drown because these sites are not fenced off nor are they lit. These are essentially a large, unmarked, unprotected, deep swimming pool in the middle of a farm field. The industrial turbine sites Tama County approved for Phase One of the Salt Creek Wind Project, they're a public safety hazard for people and animals. There's no six-foot-tall fence around them. That's required by the Tama County regulations. That's a public safety danger year-round. A snowmobiler could fall in the deep hole. So could someone work in the field or hunting. We have several sprayers out there right now. There could be a kid. I've seen, there's places nearby that I can see that I know families went there. We all know kids wander out into fields. These pads were poured months ago. It was in 2020, yet they remain unfenced, unseated, and filled with water instead of properly drained. So what have Tama County government officials done to ensure that the Salt Creek developers have complied with the terms of the Conditional Use Permit approved by Tama County?
No comment.
It's questionable what if any enforcement has taken place. If Todd Atfield were here today, perhaps he could explain that. In the interest of public safety, I reported again on May twenty-third by email and phone to Todd so that the Salt Creek turbine pad sites still do not have fences around them. They're not properly drained. There's water in them which can cause drowning.
Swimming pools are required by building code to have fences around them that are at least forty-eight inches tall, which are of a non-climbable design. Those fences are also required to be constructed so that nothing greater than four inches, about the size of a small child's head, can pass through them to prevent drowning hazards. According to the Conditional Use Permits of Tama County approved for Salt Creek Industrial Concrete Mud Pads, which now look more like a big swimming pool in agriculture fields that are still being farmed, the wind turbine sites are also required to have fences around them to prevent electrocution hazards from people or animals coming in contact with electrical currents. Tama County's Conditional Use Permit Regulations for potential industrial wind turbine sites require that at least a six-foot-tall fence be installed around the industrial wind turbines. Do Tama County's regulations also require that the fence be constructed so that it is not climbable? And so that nothing greater than four inches can pass through the fence? Similar to the swimming pool fence code requirement?
No comment.
If not, that's another example of what's lacking and what needs updating, updating in Tama County's current regulations. In addition, Tama County's regulations require that the mounds of dirt around the pads be seated down and that there's proper drainage to prevent the deep holes from filling with water and creating a drowning and disease hazard. As is now the case with the Salt Creek pads.
So after filing the public safety complaint about the Salt Creek pads on Monday, May twenty-third, I thought the zoning administrator would just take a quick action, you know? This is a safety issue. Let's rectify the situation. After all, he had my email address and my phone number. I had tried to call him, left different voicemails, sent my information by email. I was wrong. He never returned my call and he was slow to respond at all. The only time he did respond, he asked which location, which I said clearly all of them as everybody can see. At first, he didn't respond to my frequent emails, so I'd keep emailing him each week. I even asked, hey, are you getting my emails, Todd? Finally, he did respond by email. All he said is he would get back to me. He was working on it. And then finally, after eight working days from his receipt of my complaint, all I got was a letter in the mail dated June third, which was the same day he sent me. He was working on it and I didn't receive it until June ninth. Todd knew this was a public safety, so why didn't he respond in the way the complaint came, by email, to get the message to me as a concerned citizen more quickly? Instead of Todd's letter stating what he or others on behalf of the county had done to rectify the public safety and public health disease concerns from the lack of a fence, lack of proper drainage in effect, creating unmarked, unlaid swimming pools in farm fields? Here's what Todd Atfield told me by letter. He said that the matter of properly fencing, seeding, and draining the Salt Creek pads is between the developer and the landowner, not Tama County. I repeat, Tama County zoning administrator Todd Atfield said it's up to the wind project developer, in this case, Salt Creek LLC and the landowner, to fence off the turbine pad site to see that it is drained properly and the ground around it is seated down, not Tama County. Yet, as you supervisors tried to assure the public that Todd Atfield is responsible enforcing Tama County's regulations for industrial wind projects? Are you kidding me?
That's like the county saying that if someone reports a blown-out bridge on a county blacktop, instead of the county seeing to it that it is safely blocked off until it's repaired, the county would just say it's between the road construction company and the landowner to determine if they want to fence it off and restore the road to safety. That's ridiculous and it's dangerous and it could cost lives. It is clear that Tama County does not take public safety seriously when the zoning administrator claims it's up to the wind project developer and the landowner to address public safety concerns.
Did Todd Atfield or any of you even go out and look at Salt Creek's hazardous industrial turbine mud pad sites?
No comment.
If not, why?
No comment.
And if anyone from the county did, who did? I mean, guess... Did Todd Atfield even report the safety concern to Salt Creek developers?
No comment.
And if it was, it would've been nice to see the public record, but it sounds like we don't know if he even did that or what Salt Creek's response was if they did. So have the sites been properly drained so that no water remains in any of the approved pad sites?
No comment.
Have any or all property been seated down?
No comment.
Have the six-foot-tall fences been installed on any or all of the approved sites?
No comment.
And this one I know is false because when I was driving on Highway sixty-three, there's one you can see from the road and it's clearly not fenced, so we know that that's a no. And are they constructed so that nothing can climb them or nothing greater than a four-inch sphere can pass through the fence?
No comment.
If there is now a fence, which there's not, we would also want it to have a gate so that way it could be closed and locked. After all, in their present condition, these turbine pads present a huge danger. A child or anyone could fall in and drown. A crop sprayer, a field worker could also drown, or animals or livestock. Plus, since the turbine pads aren't properly drained, they're full of water which creates breeding ground for mosquitoes and allows disease to form that can contaminate the soil and groundwater or sick of wildlife that drinks from it. It is clear that Salt Creek LLC has not lived up to the minimal requirements for public safety associated with the concrete mud pads they've been permitted to construct by Tama County through the Conditional Use Permitting process. If they can't live up to those minimal requirements for mud pad construction... If they can't live up to those minimal requirements for mud pad construction, the public has little confidence that these will adhere to other minimal provisions in Tama County ordinances.
Yes, exactly.
That lack of compliance jeopardizes public safety and should not be allowed by Tama County.
That's another reason why Tama County needs to update its outdated wind energy conversion system ordinance. It's lacking in clear effective enforcement language and does not include a detailed public complaint and resolution process. It allows far too much sound to be emitted from turbines at the current sixty-decibel level. Our coalition recommended to you as an action item to reduce permitted turbine sound levels to no more than forty decibels L max at any time. The audible sound levels in Tama County's ordinance regulating industrial wind projects hasn't gone down in twenty-four years. Since when the wind ordinance was first part of the master zoning ordinance? That's unacceptable. Turbine technology has changed substantially in twenty-four years. That's why Tama County needs to revise its ordinance to lower sound levels emitted from wind turbines to no more than forty decibels L max at any time for greater public safety. Tama County's ordinance doesn't even mention infrasound. That's another major public health problem created by the existing ordinance. Infrasound is generated by wind turbines producing low frequencies that aren't detectable for the human, that aren't detectable by the human ear, but which cause fight or flight vibrations that disrupt life for people and for animals. For example, infrasound can disturb sleep, creating insomnia. It can trigger seizures, inner ear and balance problems, cause dizziness, and can lead to heart palpitations and other human health challenges. Infrasound can also negatively affect animals in addition to people. Infrasound has been used as a weapon by countries at war and in conflict to silently disrupt human populations with debilitating results. Infrasound can be a silent killer. That's why Tama County needs to update its outdated wind ordinance that doesn't even mention infrasound. That's totally unacceptable.
So infrasound affects the fluid in the inner ear. It liquefies the bowels and harms internal organs. It leads to sleep deprivation, which can complicate high blood pressure, sleep deprivation, diabetes, and ultimately, human and animal mortality. That's why Tama County's wind energy conversion system ordinance needs to be updated to limit the amount of infrasound emitted from wind turbines and for the county to continually monitor its hold wind project developers and operators accountable to comply with regulations to better protect public health and public safety.
Tama County's wind ordinance also doesn't hold wind project developers and operators accountable for the stray voltage that can radiate from wind projects. That's another serious flaw that can have serious complications and potential electrocution risks for people, livestock, wildlife, and property risk. That's another reason why Tama County's existing ordinance regulating wind projects needs to be updated to hold developers and project operators accountable for preventing stray voltage issues, especially on the property of non-participating landowners. The public still wonders why all you can say is no comment. When you're asked serious questions about why you're unwilling to update the existing wind ordinance to better protect public safety. Is it because you have, or you intend to sign agreements with wind projects on your own personal property? Or because your family members do? For example, Larry, have you signed, or you, or do you intend to sign an agreement to allow industrial wind projects or infrastructure associated with them on your own personal property?
No comment.
Dan, have you signed or do you intend to sign any agreements for wind projects on your property? Or do any of your family members?
No comment.
Bills, now that you've terminated your easement for the Salt Creek Wind Project, do you intend to re-sign an agreement for Salt Creek or any other wind project? Or do any of your family members?
No comment.
We want to make it clear that our coalition is here to stay. The more you say, no comment, the more the public is joining our calls to action to update the grossly outdated wind energy conversion system ordinance in Tama County. And the more you say, no comment, the more the public wonders who you are really working for and what it is you don't want the public to know. Our coalition will continue to address you and other county officials to exercise our legal rights to protecting public health and public safety in the best interest of all of the people of Tama County. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
So I've got a question. Um, I know your lawyers probably said you can't comment on the wind conversion system, um, which is why you're saying no comments on all those questions. The questions about, um, better spacing and better microphones, um, so we can all hear the meetings, that is not related to the wind ordinance at all. Is there any reason you're not commenting on that?
No, no comment.
Oh, jeez.
Have you made any effort to secure a vendor to provide video recordings of these meetings and to broadcast those live on your website?
No comment.
Why can't you comment on that? That's a public service and you're getting questions from the public. That's a simple answer. Have you contacted a vendor? Or do you have county staff already that can assist you with that? Or do you have any interest in connecting with Benton County? We'd be happy to put you in touch with the people over at Benton County so you could see how they're broadcasting their board of supervisor meetings on YouTube.
You guys have a lot to learn from Benton County. I attended that meeting. They put you to shame. It's terrible. They started their meeting with a pledge of allegiance. There should be classes for you guys to take how to conduct these meetings, conduct these meetings. I attended that Benton County Board of Supervisors meeting along with a lot of our other members of the coalition. I was ashamed how you guys act. They represent the people that put them into office, that pay their salaries. They listen.
I have a question. After this morning's information, will you guys be talking to Todd Appel about these concerns? Will you be able to ask him what he's doing? Or you guys review the conditional use permits and see what the wording is? Will you be able to check with him on, on what to do going forward?
Again, on the advice of our council, no comment.
See Bob, this is why we do not leave developers in charge of enforcing. It's ridiculous.
I didn't say leave the developers in charge. I said, I don't know how the ordinance reads or how it's going to read.
Well, you see, they represent the developers. That's why we're getting no comment. They're protecting their own investment. So, like I said, it's kind of like having the fox watch the hen house. It doesn't turn out well. And that's the way this is going.
One question here. I understand your concerns on the safety and I'm concerned about that as well. Have you presented those safety concerns to the Salt Creek developers?
No, I presented it to Todd Appel. That's what these guys, before they started saying no comment, said that the complaint system, it would go through a zoning administrator, which is how.
I understand, but
Yep.
I would personally, no, you shouldn't, you shouldn't have to. I agree, but in this case then, I would just say, hey, we're kind of concerned about this. Could you guys take a look at this?
See Bob, we're not kind of concerned.
I know, I tell you what. That was a poor choice of words. I'm sorry, but just tell them you're concerned about it and hand it to them. Here's, here's our list of concerns.
So here's the whole concern. See, Salt Creek's worried about their bottom line. Do you think they're gonna put in a fence when the county doesn't require it? Do you think they're gonna drain those pads when the county doesn't require it? Obviously, the county doesn't care. Todd Appel doesn't even show up. If, if the proof is in the pudding here, they don't care. So, since we don't have any good ordinances in place like Benton County, the developers are swarming this county like a bunch of buzzards because they know we're easy game and they know they're easy game.
And the proper place for enforcement is the conditional use permits were issued by the county, so it's the county's responsibility to follow up and enforce on any complaints, even in the absence of a specific complaint language. It's a county conditional use permit, Bob.
You can say that you gave them the concerns though. Is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Would you like me to give them a copy?
We don't want, we don't want someone to drown in one of these big, you know, whether it's a hunter or a crop sprayer or a child, which is why Heather has sounded the alarm where we were told to go to the zoning administrator, Todd Appel, and it's very disappointing that it took eight working days to get a response that said, not our problem. It's up to the developer and the landowner and we, the public, don't think that's acceptable because you're in law enforcement, Dennis is in law enforcement, there's a public safety issue, you get on it right away. We all want to help protect and save lives. We don't want to see a person or an animal lose its life in a big swimming pool that's unlit, unfenced, unprotected in the middle of a farm field. Nor do we want to deal with West Nile virus or anything else that comes and infects our livestock or our people as a result of these big swimming pools in the middle of farm fields that have been there for months. There's been ample time to get fencing in place. There's been ample time to get drainage in place. There's been no effort made to do any of that. If these were swimming pools, there would be immediate enforcement in action. And these are essentially swimming pools in the middle of farm fields that are unprotected, that are huge public safety risks. And our zoning administrator is telling us it's not the county's problem? You can bet that if somebody dies in one of those and drowns, the county will be facing a lawsuit for negligence. And the public is trying to do their part to make the county aware of the county's negligence in the process of enforcing those conditional use permits that were granted by the county.
And I totally agree with your concerns. What I am saying is, okay, if you're not getting anywhere here, let's give those to the developers, see what they say.
And like John said, they're about their bottom line. They're not gonna spend.
I understand, but you can't say that you didn't give it to them.
How about the county do something? We pay these county officials.
The wrong guy here. I'm just, I'm just here, you understand?
Folks, Jake Wilson fell in Wolf Creek in La Porte City. He wasn't found till months later. Do we want that to happen again? If anything like that happens, it's on you guys. Cause you're not willing to enforce anything. What if it's your child, your grandson? Will it change your mind? Will it be a different story? I cannot believe that you stick up for this.
I know that the contractors will not accept a complaint from a citizen if they're not part of the contract or part of the county. When you're a normal citizen, you cannot make a complaint to this, this company. They tell you that. You're, they're not part of it, so you can't make a complaint to them.
So how's that gonna work when there's a turbine fifteen-hundred foot from my house and it's loud and I can't complain? I just gotta deal with it?
Heather's got three small kids.
Two.
Two, excuse me.
My husband's nine of his kids.
He could, he could, he could follow the two. Guys, this is just, this is just to protect the people you represent and you refuse to do that. I am astonished.
Can I ask the sheriff, you're in law enforcement. Is there anything we're missing on how to go forward in enforcing a Tama County law? Is there something we're not looking at or somebody else we need to ask that would actually answer us?
Dennis, are you concerned about those holes out there full of water, not fenced off?
Twelve-foot deep, sixty-five foot wide.
What about detassers?
Yes, I would have concern about that.
What should we do then? We, we need help. We're not getting any help. What should we do?
Laws that are written I can enforce. The ones that we receive complaints on, we will address and, and see what.
So if we called your office and it's in the conditional use permit ordinance, you would enforce it? You would do something?
I would have to seek the advice of our county attorney in what direction.
Well, it would be nice to meet Mr. Heron. We would love for him to come. We would love him.
You can call his office and ask.
Dennis, we appreciate you commenting.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
If I'm out, if I'm out, I'm not. Yeah, I understand. It's a concern. I looked at three of those pads with permission and the one, it was a minimum of four feet deep. The fence is two fourteen-gauge hot wires with steel posts, probably forty-foot hard. And there's nothing that's gonna stop getting in there and wire that. It's clumsy.
Do we have any detassers or roving people working in that area? As I ran a company, a testing company for thirty-some years. And at least our company we worked for, which was pioneer at that time, would have nothing to do with that kind of a problem. I mean, I don't know if Corteva is over in that area or not, but somebody needs to let them know.
They are, Vicky. Thank you very much for that comment. Corteva is very liability oriented. They left Nevada. They left Nevada. The Nevada Growing Center, they left. They have wind turbines in Nevada. Now Corteva's largest growing area is Benton County. Benton County, they're moving into Benton County. Does that tell you guys anything? You've got probably one of the state's largest plants right here in Toledo, Iowa. Apparently, they don't mean anything to you for economic development either. I'm really amazed at your stubbornness to protect this project. I understand to a certain degree, we've got investors, we've got good friends in Trera, we gotta protect their best interests. Completely understand that. But at the cost of the Tama County taxpayers, the Tama County people that elected you, that pay your salaries, and you refuse to listen. You refuse to listen. If your lawyer won't let you speak, why don't you have him here? We have questions for him. Did you ever think of that? Or is he just afraid you guys are gonna really say something stupid and screw it up? I'm really ashamed to eat through you.
We all are.
And I voted for you guys. Huge, huge disappointment. And to think you're drawing a paycheck on us yet. I just, I don't understand it. That you won't listen to almost a thousand people on a petition. And Larry, yet again, you tell us there was nobody against this. Every week it gets more, it gets more. But your reluctance, you, you continue to stick up for the developers. I'll never understand it. You'll never see those guys again. You're gonna see all of us on the street here in Toledo, the corn carnival, Dyzert, even Trera, Larry. I don't know how you guys look at yourself in the mirror. I really don't. You're saying no to all these people. I don't understand it. No conscience. There's only a few words that come to my mind and that's one. Huge disappointment? So I guess you guys can stick with your same old story about no comment. You do whatever you think you need to do. But it's a disgrace to Tama County for what you're doing. An absolute disgrace.
Well, thank you for your comments. It's just about nine thirty, we have to start our public, our regular meeting. So thank you for coming.
Who is the point man for, for Salt Creek? Who is the point man for Salt Creek that you guys should be talking to?
The head office over here, you know, Bob, Bob, what's his last name?
Burkestrum.
Burkestrum.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. That's the one guy that wanted me to meet one-on-one with him, with Kurt Burn. Oh, yeah. And we don't want to forget his son, Eric. Yeah. You got those names back there, Craig?
We're writing them down.
Great.
But Bob suggested that we talk to Salt Creek. What we're asking you is, who do you talk to?
That would be the contact person for Salt Creek, Bob Burkestrum.
So there's nobody in Tama County that's investors that we could go see in Trera, Iowa?
Oh.
I mean.
They wanna talk to you? I'm sure you could. I mean, talk to the guys that are, you know.
You have to hold a place of position for them to wanna talk to you.
I don't know all of the people who are involved personally. Sure you could find out. I'm sure, maybe Burkestrum can answer your question.
Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you and we hope that the public safety concerns are addressed and taken seriously because we don't want to see any person or any human lose their life. And we believe that onus is squarely on Tama County since Tama County issued the conditional use permits. So we would ask that somebody please get that message to Todd Appel and see to it that Tama County, whether it's through law enforcement or zoning or however, make sure that that ordinance that is in place and the conditional use permits that have been granted by Tama County are enforced for public safety. And it really makes the public question whether any further wind projects should be approved if we can't handle twelve concrete pads that are sixty-five feet across and twelve feet deep that are big swimming pools in ag land that is still actively being farmed. So if we can't handle that and ten sites, we surely can't handle sixty turbines or any more. So we need to think long and hard before we approve anything further and get it right now in the interest of public safety. Thank you. Somebody please alert Todd Appel that it's the county's responsibility to enforce that and get those fences up and get those.
I think he knows, I think he knows.
But are you his boss?
Nope.
Who is?
They are.
So you're Todd Appel's boss, so he reports to you guys? Can you please follow up to make sure that he's doing his job and enforcing those conditional use permits? Cause again, we don't want to read about some child drowning.
Can we please set our pride aside here, guys, and just think about what could happen? Cause after it does.
Right. Yeah, and we're just, you know, accidents happen quickly and those things are not lit and, you know, people are working in fields late at night or there's hunters that are out there, kids wander away from their farmstead or their acreage. We do not want to see anyone get hurt and those things have gotta be updated and it's gotta be a priority because it's been months and they've been like that, knowing the rain we just got today.
They're running over.
There's, it's not safe, but that's what we really care about lives.
We have to say, we have to learn.
Yep.
So that's been Ruth.
No, we just want to make sure something gets done on the county's part.
Right.
Please start the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's call a meeting to order, it's nine thirty.
It's not nine thirty.
Well, that clock says, my phone says it's nine thirty-two, that one says it's nine thirty-three.
I have a question. You just said you're calling the meeting to order now. On the website, it says the meeting agenda started at eight thirty with the public comments. So is that not part of the meeting?
No, it's not part of the, the, uh, meeting we have.
So you're not taking minutes?
We have action items on nine thirty.
Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, when the three of you are together and you're deliberating, that is a public meeting. That is to be on public record. Minutes are to be recorded in compliance with the Iowa Open Meetings Law. So were minutes taken for our comments and you'll assure us that those are? So, so that was then in effect a public meeting with public comments. This is your agenda portion of your meeting.
This is our agenda part.
Yeah, we just want to be clear on that. Thank you, Dan.
Okay, is there a motion approved, last week's notes? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Who's name? Lady Carrie. Lyle's not around, I don't think today, has he, Tammy?
I haven't seen him.
Tammy, do you have something for us?